Call me back for the evening. You can call me or you can't.
Good afternoon, we want to welcome you to the 4th evening mouse and cats folder for July 5th, 2011. It's now 6:00 PM. I need a few seconds for work. I pray about the student taking care of students.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much for your watch care over us. And we ask for that you continue to keep your hand of protection over our students during this summer season. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be working in the school district and preserving the children of our county. Lord, I ask your blessing upon each of these school board members to know, give them clarity in mind and give them courageous hearts, Father, as they consider the items on the agenda. But thank you for the work that they do. And Lord, I ask that a spirit of community would bring home all the people in our school system so that we can do our very best for the children of our county. Father, I thank you for who you are and for loving us just as we are. Thank you, Father, for keeping your hand upon our school district. These things you pray and they're holding out.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a request to lead the agenda. And that request is going to be through the consent. And that request is seven days. And it's going to be agreement with boys and girls club for presentation on July 8th, 2011. So we got two people consent agenda. Everybody has a copy up here. Attention. This is probably just about doing from Alexander. But it's the same agenda. Questions? All in favor of? This is Steve, you have to go. We will go right into items recommended for individual consideration. So that's item eight, school control district transfers. This is number?
Under the school's other requests, we have a letter from five groups requesting that his daughter, Catherine Crater, continue at Taylor County. That she's been attending there all of her life. And so they're asking for her to continue. The mother works in Taylor County. The second request was for a child named Miles Stanley. The mother is Kelly Upland. She's asking for him to attend Highness School. It's currently set for Central. He'll be in the fourth grade. There's currently no running in the fourth grade. They have 23 students currently committed to Highness. And so they're not running for him at Highness.
I'm making a motion to approve Catherine Crater's continuing to carry. Second.
This is the board member Hall, saying that board member Hall that this group's continuing to carry. All in favor? Item 10, overnight field trips. Well, the second request either has to approve or deny. Or if your table had taken that role.
You said there was no.
There are currently 23 students who live in the Highness. Fourth, fourth grade. They can only have 22 in the class.
I'm making a motion to deny the request, Mrs. Miller. Second.
This is probably the board member Hall, saying that board member Hall that we deny the request at Highness. Discussion. All in favor of? Item 10, overnight field trips.
Overnight field trips. We see nine and two requests.
If you're going to go back to item number nine, that's going to be your request, Mrs. Miller?
There are none.
Okay. Go right back to item 11, out of state trips. This is number?
We have one request with safety safety students of communication. That's for project directors. And that's I take these two. And we have the agenda and the all the details about the trip. And that's covered through funding from the safety safety students grant. July 12th through July 16th.
Make a motion to approve the out of state.
This is the board member Hall, saying that board member Hall that approve out of state trip. Discussions. All in favor? Back to you, Mrs. Dickie. Item 12, careful cases of school policy. 60193, protect intended.
This is just a clarification of what the policy actually says. I worked with the school board attorney, Mr. Reeves, to draft corrected language. The intent of the board in 2008, I believe, was to allow the $5,000 incentive to continue for employees who did not enter drop but did retire normally. So for them to continue to be able to receive the $5,000 incentive. But for those that entered drop, that we would no longer pay the $5,000 incentive. The language in here read basically that no employees were entitled to the $5,000 retirement incentive. So our practice that we've been using has been that when an employee retires and they have entered drop, then they do not receive the $5,000 incentive. But if an employee retires and have not entered drop, then they still receive the $5,000 incentive. So this policy just brings our current procedure in line and it matches the two together. We just had some language issues with the previous policy. So we're asking for this to be advertised, those revisions.
I'm making a motion to advertise the term. So what's the deal? What do you want to go on?
Well, you need to motion advertise. I need a motion to advertise, yes.
Right back to Sam. This is probably the board member Hall, saying that board member Alexander that we are advertised for type of same too. Any discussion on it? All in favor of? Back to you, Mrs. Dickie. Item 13, lease agreement for thus replacement. Dr. Hayes.
At the last meeting, you guys approved the revised contract that Donmore had sent to us. At this meeting, we're actually just providing you a copy of the application for the financing agreement. Once the financing application is actually approved, then we'll bring back a completed loan agreement as a lease agreement with everything back to you for completion. So right now, basically, we're waiting on the financing, the actual financing to be approved by Donmore. So we're going to submit this to them and then I'll have responsible have the complete package.
So we don't need it, but?
No, I mean, basically, you've already approved everything. This is really, I think y'all asked for this just to come back for your information as this has evolved. Y'all just asking for more information. So it's really just for your information this time. There's not really anything. You guys have already approved the whole program and everything up to this point. So right now, we're just basically showing you that what's actually involved in the application. And then from there, we'll, once it's approved by them, then we'll bring back the final agreement.
Next time, we'll just have this is general information. Item 14, spring school volunteers. Dr. Hayes.
There are none.
Am I incorrect when this is turning Dr. Hayes?
It does say that remains in transition to December. But anyway, it's the first day. So when the agenda went out, it was Dr. Hayes.
Okay, I'm just questioning this thing. I've said it twice, Dr. Hayes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, remaining in the transition. Okay, item 14, spring school volunteers, Mrs. Hubbard?
There are none.
Okay. Okay, 15 and 16 is going to be Mrs. Hubbard. Okay, item number 15, personnel changes, Mrs. Hubbard?
Thank you. In your personnel packet, you have one instructional recommendation for a teacher at Madison County Central School. And you have an instructional retirement from Madison County High School. That's effective June 30th. And you have a request for leave from Madison County Central School for a paraprofessional beginning August 16th through January of 2012. On the back, you have recommendations for the Green Bay Elementary School Summer Enrichment Camp, the teachers' format. At this time, we'd like to request to advertise the teaching position that will be vacant as a result of the instructional retirement at Madison County High School. That's going to be an English teacher. So we'd like to request to advertise that vacancy.
Just public information, Mrs. Hubbard. Instructional recommendation. Can you call these names instructional fact?
Yes, ma'am. Under instructional recommendations at Madison County Central School, Matthew King is being recommended effective August 11th of 2011. Under the instructional retirements, we have Miss Catherine Hale, who is retiring from the Madison County High School as an English teacher. And that was effective June 30th of this year. Under the non-instruction request for leave, we have a request from Samantha Fletcher at the Madison County Central School requesting a leave of absence to go on internship beginning August 16th, 2010 through January 4th, 2012. And the recommended teachers for the Green Bay Elementary School Summer Enrichment Camp are Emily Dickey, Michelle Kellen, Rebecca Gonzalez, and Stacy Brakes.
I make a motion to approve the personnel changes and to grant permission to advertise for the house to have motion position.
This is probably the board member Hall, saying that board member Alexander to accept personnel changes and to advertise for an English teacher. Discussion. All in favor of? Item number 16, staffing table revisions. This is covered?
Okay, there are no revisions on the staffing table except under the STEM position. That is a grant funded position and it's for an instructional position to be added to the staffing table. On the non-instruction page, that is a matter of a location change. It was approved at the last meeting from the same zone powers. They were on the district page, but we're changing them to reflect where they're actually located. And that's at Madison County Central School.
Karen, second.
Thank you.
Item 17, other items of interest to the board?
There's that addition, that STEM cake, that's an addition. Under instruction.
I thought you said everybody in.
I said have, under instructional, that's one addition.
I'm making a motion to approve the.
This is probably the board member Hall, saying that board member Alexander that we approve the staffing table revisions. Discussion.
So those staffing tables, they should fit in all these changes and positions.
Yes, ma'am.
Cause I asked last week for a list of appointments.
Okay. Yeah, I put a question, Mars, and I do have a question. Just for my information.
Sure.
I think I already figured that one out because we're just switching it. I thought eight. I'm just trying to get it straight.
Yes. Mrs. Hubbard is now the director of administrative services.
Okay. And Cheryl James, that position, is that the one that you had out?
That is Cheryl James' position. She's schooling very many brands.
She's always been out?
Yes, ma'am.
That position that Michael Hayes said, turn around, that's a new position of grant, grant, grant.
School Improvement Grant, yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. That's a new grant.
The half of it is, we have the Career Pathways Consortium. Our county and five other counties plus the community college that is setting up make up the Career Pathways Consortium. And so that's half time. The other half time is a new grant called the STEM. Same one that had this new teaching position for the high school. The STEM cake grant to coordinate career and technical offerings at the high school in line with the STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. But yes, ma'am, it's grant 50, grant one, both pieces are granted.
Okay, so he was, he was just, he was just removed from Central and put to a new position.
He was principal at Central and now is coordinator under the STEM cake and career pathways.
And then one other one, did I read the teaching and learning?
Yes, ma'am.
That's Julia. Unless she's always been since 2003. Oh, there's one other thing I was going to, and that's just because we just got this year. So I had a chance to put my question up. So that's about the one, because I'm asking a lot of questions. Because we just got this when you walked in.
Yes, ma'am.
Gloria, is it Cashwell?
Yes, ma'am.
And she's going to be the new office secretary out front.
She's, she's still the maintenance secretary, but she, but her desk is now moved to the front desk so she can also do receptions.
But she don't have another duty?
Yes, ma'am, she do.
And y'all think that this is not recent to Central School?
Yes, she is. For the guidance secretary on the school side. That's it, and we'll take the vote. All in favor of? If the motion was accepted, then we'll have discussion. Mr. Paul, information. Is that being taken on? Mr. Allen, second. Yes, exactly. That was discussion, now we need to take the vote.
Right, right.
All in favor of? Max, Bill, Mrs. Dickie, Mrs. Miller, that administrative.
It's bad.
Bad, okay. Mrs. Miller, that administrative appointments in 2011, 2012, should return. If you let the public know about those appointments on? Yes, ma'am, they are. You want to get that copy? Well, you can let them know now, although you can give a copy whichever, but they have your ballot. We have the item 17 of items of interest. Yes, ma'am. In the section behind, there was a division of administrative period or for rescheduling the period. I want to call back to your intention of your other items of interest. Okay, thank you. Item 18, public input. Oh, Shirley, why didn't you call? I said that was all. I had Shirley Justin come tonight to update the board on school grade, school achievement. Shirley, go right back. You have one name on the sign in sheet. And ma'am, if you don't mind, if you, Mrs. Joseph, come up and we can give us some information. Thank you. I said sorry, Shirley.
That's okay. Martha, we got a little packet for you to move along to the way. Second, did you get my email?
Yes, I do.
All the all these, we have the different pages. You know, they have, all you have is a summary of the school grades for this year. And they have a little bit more for the breakdown. The first two pages is just the general rules for calculating the school grade. And the second page deals with college grade, high school grade. Right now, the high school is saying they have points on it. They're not getting the extra grades because some guy was running and it won't, it doesn't ever really be sent. And so, but all the FCAT, and that's not based on FCAT, the FCAT points are out. And so using the FCAT, this is a process of calculating grades. You're looking at your performance and points. That's your level three and above. With exception of writing, that's a level four, blah. And your learning gains and your mood still, um, also tells you about that. The high school could earn bonus points, which they did this year for. If at least 50% of students retaking the grade 10 FCAT and reading, and at least 50%, and at least 50% of students retaking grade 10 FCAT math, at paying a parent's school, you know, period. And so that's the way the high school could earn bonus points. And we got your other part here. Okay, going to the third page. The third page is just a summary of the district grades from 2004 through 2011. And this is a different category. And the second column to the right shows you the total points that the district, the district gets graded also. The district is now according to 11 points. And you see that transfers to a D, but you'll see the historical look at the district's grades. The second page is AYP page, all of this. And to make AYP, you've got to have percent, meet 1% of criteria. And you get the different categories, you have the different subgroups. And you've got to meet your life proficiency, graduation proficiency, and your school grade, that's the A, B, C. To make AYP. And if the district met 67% of the AYP criteria, and they are not AYP. But if you want to lead deep range to it, they need the read proficiency, math proficiency. The efficiency rate for AYP this year says for reading, 79% of the students should score at least 75, level three and above. And with AYP, we're dealing with all of our students. As opposed to when you deal with school grade, certain category deals with only certain students. Okay, and for math, the AYP, it says 80% of our students tested will score level three or higher. Okay, to meet the right proficiency, you must increase by one point from the previous year unless you score in the 90 to 100 range. So you can fluctuate that 90 to 100. But if you score less than 90 points, you have to increase by 1% to meet that right proficiency. The graduation rate, you got to score in the range of 85 to 100% or else you increase your graduation rate by 2% from the previous year. Now, y'all know Governor Bush or President Bush said by 2014, we will be proficient. So each year, the benchmarks go up certain amount of points. So next year, whether they're reading 79 and math being 80, both will be 86%. If you go to your next page, this is a report card for the high school. It tells you what percent of students have, man, have high standards, what percent may learning gains, what percent may adequate progress, and the total point. And if you look down at the bottom, that will tell you the length of how many courses we're taking, maybe A, B, C, D, R. Now, I made a change on your paper. It was a 3.5 and then a 4.0 because this was printed before. They didn't have time to change. But the life test is a 4.0 rather than a 3.5. It was 3.5 a couple years ago. Okay. And you go to the next page. That's an historical look at the high school grade. And you see for 2011, they've got a pinning because I told you, right now, they're on a 30 points. And you look over it, it costs 34 to 15 points. And also, they were getting those 10 bonus points because they're addressing these of those tech students. And the next page talks about the AYP for Madison County High. The little note I have, that's a personal note, uh, number one, I have a couple of years of data and I do want to list the 2010, 2011 numbers. So where there's enough in the population to measure AYP, they even have a yes and no. And thank y'all for reading. We're testing all our students. We're doing a very good job of testing students. Okay, the next page would be the central school. And that's the report card, that's an historical book of their school grades. Okay, and the next page would be the AYP page. Okay, the next school's green now. Look at the report card. And look at their historical grades, and that's AYP grade. I want to draw your attention to the lead report card. If you look down, lead, I'm in the top of 559 points, you see that? On the report card. And if you look down in the legend, 559 points, it should translate to an A. If you read on the other side of that, it says the adequate progress is based on thanks to the low 4,000 students in reading math. Yes, 50% or more may learning gains, you're going to keep in math. And if you make A, B, or C, that number has to be more than 50%. Otherwise, you will drop to 11 points. So that's what's happening, at least 11 points. So there's no type of, if you look and say, they got 559 points, that's going to be an A. Truly translates to an A. But state look hard at us addressing these of all of the students. And the low 4,000 is not connected there. And we kind of.
Before you leave today?
Yes.
Did you talk about that AYP page?
Okay, AYP. Okay, let's look at A, kind of, these AYP pages. Now, if you notice, they got yeses there, right? So they have made AYP, this is the second year, the second year, no, this is the third year making AYP, isn't it?
Yes.
This is the third year making AYP, last year, it was school choice, and they will continue to be a school choice.
We're in the process of preparing, whether it's to all the other students of Pinedale, Green Hill, and Central School, explaining about choice, and informing them that we met a hundred percent of AYP faculty, and that is for school choice.
And the look from, on these AYP pages, if we look, we see a toll, we say yes, and we see blank, and eight. That does not mean that you not have that students out there, or Hispanic students, or Asian students, that means it's not enough to build some group, and if you get a yes, you know, you got to have thirty kids there, so you gotta have thirty kids in that group, but therefore, that's why it's an eight. But those students are counted on the toll. And Pinedale, they got six hundred points out of eight hundred points, which is fantastic, but our school grade is eight, but if you look at AYP, and you see, and they, you got ninety-two percent of the criteria, you see what, do you see what checks, who made AYP? That's a very, very crazy page. If you see a no, that's the area that maybe not makes a big mark. That's a great look at our grades in the law school, if you look down at the address, H G T P, school grades, F-CAP, Bill, either, or pick another part, you can go to that website, and there's a lot more information. Question, Ellen? Do you need any additional questions?
Okay.
Ma'am, thank you, you have a statement. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I mean, I don't really put that one in sight, and look at the second one. Okay, Public Input, Mrs. Clinton?
I have several questions I'd like to ask, the first is that, is this the name again, that turned out the new position from Green Hill, right? It's a, it's funded, it's from the Green Hill, School of Freedom Grant, and from the high school school. So his salary is split between those two brands?
Yes ma'am.
So he was just assigned that position?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I thought we, yes, said that we have track, but never the last. Okay, my other thing is, since official, up crack on grades, or what is our overall state rating? Do you know that, do you have that, I can add that? Is that available, I'm trying to, is that available? Is there somewhere else? I found myself looking in the, you told mine? Well, I must have looked, because I really went on D O E website and kind of looked at grades, and probably had to pay myself off, on some of the things that was, do you know what it is?
No, I can't, I can't, I'm here to do it on my.
Okay, we got it, we, we, I don't know, go to it anyway. Well, in, in light of our school grades, how is the curriculum being adjusted, I think that's a beautiful question. Are we adjusting our curriculum to try to improve our grades?
Yes ma'am.
For those schools that are, so how, how do you feel about that, is there a team, or you just do it by yourself, or?
Ma'am, that's a team effort.
And what kind of positions and people that own that team, that have to know that?
Some of those decisions will now be made through the turnaround office.
Okay, so, the turnaround office include?
Mr. Bates and Ms. Joseph.
So those are your team members, that have developed the curriculum for the schools that are not doing well?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I know that the teachers are accountable for medical goals, are those goals still? Will they be the same goals for the principal's this year, having done a couple, or? Making sure that the schools are full, how, how do you count on that this year, as you're talking?
In Senate Bill seven thirty-six, that was passed, the evaluation for both teachers and administrators, fifty percent of the points have to be based on student achievement, also for district personnel. So, not only the teachers being held accountable, but principals, fifty percent of the points on their evaluation have to be with how their students perform. People of the district who work with the schools, and the student achievement, fifty percent of their evaluation will be based on student achievement. So, yes ma'am, accountability is, in the classroom, but at the school administrator, and at the district administrator. Trying to make sure I ask these questions, or me, as we, this, rest of the top, which I found is also a target, as in their bright teachers and bright leaders, and the requirements in there are the same, but what I just described in Senate Bill seven thirty-six.
Okay, so I can get those from that, this side, okay, I'll go there. I'm gonna make sure I give people the right information. Okay, one other thing, have you considered holding off on customer recommendations, at least until you get the F-CAP scores?
The problem with them is the school year runs from July first to June the thirtieth, and we never know when the school scores are coming out. Originally, this year, they told us they'd be out the middle of July. The high school score is either the end of November, or the first of December. So, it's, it's impossible to hold off on reduced rate recommendations, if we do this.
But when it does come out, that will be a great factor for you to consider, yes, when you're making your recommendations. So when it's possible, you will be looking at that?
Yes ma'am, that, that, from now on, is a consideration, yes ma'am.
Okay. You know, I looked at some historical data on D O E, and I think I've made a few friends in Department of Education just for answering questions, because I want to be knowledgeable, and trying to get knowledgeable in, in the school education system. And some of the language I don't, not familiar with, so I have to ask questions. But I, I've articulated through D O E site, and just to get some historical data, and I just kind of looked at the last eight years, and looked at our school grades for the eight years, and six out of those eight years, we've pretty much been a, there's only been two times that we were C in eight years. And I also looked a little further, and I saw where students of color seem to be the main target that's really kind of pulling our grades down, and just looking at this, on D O E site, you can look at it and see just who's doing what. And when I looked at that, that kind of alarmed me a little bit, and, and also intrigued me to the point that I was wondering, how are we addressing that particular group of children? Because if we address them and come up with the right curriculum, that perhaps we can build our grades, but our students somehow, what we've been doing is not working for that population, the students of color, because they're historically, just on the bottom, and something, neither, well, the teaching or the curriculum that we have, is not making a difference to them, because if you look at over years, I'm not talking about just one year, I'm talking about several years, looking at that data, I don't know whether the school board members have gone to the site and really looked at what's going on in our, in our district. But I, I took the time to do that, because I don't want to just say, look at one year, because you need to, to know what's been going on prior to, so we can know where we're going in the future. And so, when I looked at that, that gave me some concern about curricular development, that's one reason why I asked who's on, on the curricular development team, because we really, I mean, we can't keep sticking our heads in the sand and saying, you know, we're gonna pull it up, when we got a problem with a, a particular segment of students. And that's not an indictment against anybody, but that's what the data shows, and if we don't pull that group up, we're gonna stay at the bottom. There's no way that you can have fifty-seven percent of students of color in a district, and those children are the ones that's not learning, which is causing our school grade to look like what it is, and we not changed something. So I would hope that perhaps in this next year, that you're really be looking at some innovative things for that segment of children, to help them to learn better, so that we can bring these kids up, and therefore, bring our education system up in Madison County District. And you know, I, I'm very concerned about the fate of our school here in Madison County. You know, so much so, it's not just that, I don't want you to feel like every time I'm up, it's an indictment. I, you know, I, I have a passion for the students, I have a passion for the education process. You know, and I, along with some of the community leaders, and even talk to some retired teachers, educators that are willing to help, but you know, we can't help if we not invited in, or know what to do. You can say volunteer, but it's a little more than, you know, volunteering with the same old thing, we got to make some other kinds of changes that will, will affect our, our children and their quality of education. And we can't continue to, you know, stick our heads in the sand and pretend like, you know, everybody's doing well, everybody's not doing well. I applaud lead and Pinedale, I think they're extraordinary. That's why we need to bring our other schools up to the level and quality of education that they're experiencing. And I really believe that we can do that, I, I really, really do, I'm not just saying that, I really do, but if we, if we'll just come on and let's work together, and get some people who know what it takes for a student of color to learn, and let's get some curriculum built it, so that we can have some successes, is all I'm saying. So, you know, and I, I just leave that on the table, you know, there are people who are really willing to sit down and give you some ideas, because, you know, those students learn different, and, and you can't develop something for somebody that you don't know, is what I'm saying. So I, I, I say that to you, Superintendent, and I think I said to you and Rob, you know, I'm not just here, I want, what can I do to help? But not only am I willing to help, but there are retired educators that are as well concerned, and would like to sit to the table, and maybe give you some suggestions, if you're willing to, but listen, or, you know, maybe you don't want our help, maybe you don't need our help, but anyway, the office on the table, and, and I just wanted to make that available to you.
Thank you, ma'am.